Okay, guys, I think we should get started, don't you? Everybody ready? Okay. So, welcome, everybody. I'm Erica Brown, and welcome to the 2025 Meet the Candidate Forum for Manchester Board of Selectmen. This year, we have three people vying for two seats on the select board. I'm going to introduce them from your left. Mary Ann Wood. Kathy Bellata is in the center, and Brian Solace is at the far end. Welcome, thank you. I'd like to, before we start, just say a big thank you to 1623 Studios, our community public access television, you know, platform who is recording this. We have, the format that we're going to go through today is what we typically do. We share the questions ahead of time with the candidates, and we do that for two reasons. One, because it's fair to do it that way, but also because this is recorded, we want to give people who see it later a worthy experience. We don't want them to sort of sit and watch gaps of silences, and we want them to be informed and put their best foot forward. So that's what we did. We're going to go through sort of an introduction, then we're going to have some prepared questions, and then we're going to get to questions from the audience if you like. So, let's get started. Why don't we get started with introductions? And I'm going to kick it off alphabetically, just to be fair. So, we're going to start off with Kathy Bellata, who is an incumbent. Kathy, why are you running? And introduce yourself, even though you are an incumbent, and you probably don't need an introduction, but for the voters. And I'd like you to speak into the microphone and turn it on, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. So, I'm Kathy Bellata. I've been in Manchester for about 12 years, seven as a full-time resident. I'm a retired Raytheon IT executive with experience leading large organizations, really large projects, and solving complex challenges through collaboration. And basically, the reason I'm running again and would like to continue to serve the town is because I believe these professional skills are really relevant to the challenges we have, and I'd like to use them to help the town. In addition to my select board responsibilities, I'm also on the Board of Directors at Wellspring House in Gloucester. It's a terrific nonprofit that strives to prevent homelessness by helping people to become financially independent. I'm also a busy Mimi. I have a 22-month-old granddaughter that I adore and babysit a few days a week. You also asked us what our single biggest challenge, Erica, is in Manchester, and I don't think it's a secret. I see our single biggest challenge is funding everything we want and need in the town. We have some incredibly expensive expenses and infrastructure investments coming our way, yet we also need to control operational spending to avoid overburdening the taxpayer. The timing of these expensive endeavors is a little bit unfortunate. There's a bit of uncertainty in the economy right now. Prices are continuing to rise, making construction projects especially expensive. So, when we talk about wanting Manchester to become more affordable, we tend to think about the price of housing, which is market-driven. But from a select board standpoint, one of the best things that we can do is try and control our spending and keep our property taxes manageable. That's where the select board plays an important role. Again, I think I have the skill sets to apply to that challenge. You know, you hear a lot of talk about rents in downtown or housing rents being too expensive. Well, the select board can't set the rents, but we can help keep the spending manageable so that we don't exacerbate existing problems for property owners and chase people out of town who have lived here for a very long time and want to continue to do so. So, in order to solve those challenges, we need meaningful public input, and I think we need to do a better job of engaging the public in those conversations.
That's great. Brian Solace, you're next. And yes, introduce yourself, and what do you believe is the largest challenge that is facing Manchester? Thank you, Kathy.
There we go. My name is Brian Solace, and obviously, I'm running for reelection to the select board here in Manchester. I've lived in town for close to 30 years, which is kind of painful to think about that. My kids went to school here. In the past 20 years, a lot of you see me as I officiated your kids on the basketball court through, first it was the MAA and then the Poxon Recreation. Three years ago, I decided to run because I didn't like some of the decisions that were made coming out of COVID, during COVID and coming out of COVID. I thought a lot of our, I think there was some draconian measures taken by both the Board of Selectmen back then and the Board of Health, and I was tired of complaining. You always tell your kids, "Do something about it." So, I had to practice what I preached, and I decided to run. In the last three years, I think the board itself has done admirable work as we've gone through 40A, the 40B process detailing, which I was also on the ZBA at that point. I'm, again, proud of some of the things I've accomplished, including I orchestrated, helped bring back the carnival here to town, and highlighted just last week by the signing of the PNS at the senior center. It was a long time coming, and most of you remember, or have been hearing about this for the last 12 or 14 years. And we, with a lot of cooperation with the Masons, we got it done. As far as the biggest challenge, you know, a week ago, I would have told you it was the school budget. The immediate biggest challenge, that's kind of, hopefully, been resolved for the year, but it's something that's still going to have to be addressed for long-term solutions. And so, I think, right now, I think the biggest challenge today is navigating the ever-changing landscape of state and federal grants. As Kathy mentioned, we have close to $100 million of infrastructure work ahead of us, and we need the partnership of the state and federal agencies to lessen the burden on the taxpayers. So, that's going to be, so now we have to start looking at what we have in front of us. I'm going to steal Kathy's lines here of needs and wants, and prioritize, and still try to service the citizens of Manchester. We as select board, we are a customer service business. You are the customers, we are the service. And as a select board member, I think I'm here to help facilitate that, as well as support the town staff. They're the face of the town, we're just placeholder here. But, so, that's what I look to do in another three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mary Ann?
I don't speak on a microphone very often. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. My name is Mary Ann Wood, and I'm proud to be running for the Manchester By the Sea Select Board. My connection to the town runs deep. In my early 20s, I worked at Al's Cafe, a beloved local gathering place where I met my favorite townie, David Wood, who later became my husband. We spent time in other communities. We always thought Manchester was going to be the place where we stayed. In 2005, we moved here, and our three boys, Frank, Danny, and Felix, grew up in the heart of this community. From Little League to Pottos, Singing Beach Libraries Days, and everything Manchester have to offer, we utilized. In 2014, my husband passed away suddenly. Our boys were just 11, 9, and 6 years old. In that moment of heartbreak, this town lifted us up with kindness, compassion, and true community spirit. That experience shaped who I am and deepened my commitment to this town. Professionally, I've worked as a public school teacher for over 10 years. I have a law degree from Suffolk University and worked as a real estate attorney. And today, I run Bluebird Restaurant Downtown that I hope brings warmth and welcome to everyone who walks through the door. I'm also a property owner, and I lease to Jack's Barber Shop. So, I understand the day-to-day realities of running a small, local business and owning property downtown. I'm running for the select board because I care deeply about Manchester, and I want to give back to the community that gave back to my family. I believe my experience as a teacher, property owner, lawyer, and business owner, and a parent, gives me a well-rounded perspective on what our town needs moving forward. The biggest challenge I see is how we manage rising costs and major infrastructure needs without losing sight of what makes this place so special. From PFAS remediation to culvert and seawall repairs, we face real financial pressures. We also are trying to preserve services, affordability, and our small-town charm. We need to prioritize spending, plan long-term, seek out funding, and communicate clearly with residents. If elected, I bring a collaborative, transparent, and grounded approach to every decision I make. Thank you for time and support. I am Mary Ann Wood, and I'd be honored to serve the select board.
Thank you. It's interesting that already we can sense a theme about spending and the need and the financial precariousness of our times right now. Okay, so that is a good pivot to our first question, and we have three questions for these candidates. They're all going to get the same amount of time. And I will kind of use my judgment and see if somebody would like a rebuttal, and I'll kind of ask that if it's needed, because I think that's the nice thing to do. So, the first question that I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you, Brian, to start it off, is about sort of budgetary pressures. It's really a budget question. Towns across the Commonwealth now face huge budgetary pressures and cuts from federal funding. We've already heard that a couple of times. Meanwhile, Manchester has a large list of big-ticket town initiatives that need to be tackled in the next 12 to 24 months. What strategies would you employ to manage escalating costs while maintaining essential services? And how would you approach potential future financial challenges without overburdening the taxpayer? Brian, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I have said on more than one occasion at a select board meeting that we have saddled, as it were, with previous boards kicking the can down the road for the last 50 years. Projects that could have been done, haven't been done, and for a while, I thought we were all prepared to start handling them ourselves. Facilities master plan, along with the master plan, have laid out a course for us to follow. Now, with cutting in state and federal funding and not knowing where the next dollars are coming from, I think the first thing to do is we have to manage expectations. We have two projects that immediately come to mind, the Rotunda in Central Street Culvert. We addressed the Rotunda at town meeting to pick up the shortfall that we were, we thought were the monies that were coming. And now, we're still waiting to find out what's going on with the federal and state grants for the culvert. We had it, we don't have it, we had it. I'm not sure where it is right now. I think that's an ever-changing target, a moving target. We are very fortunate. I think that our department heads are very adept at finding and applying for financial grants. We also have an extraordinary support staff in the TA's office that help coordinate all these things. And, you know, the, we have to lean heavily on our department heads for even more support. We'll have to delay the expansion of services and hopefully just maintain what we have, because I think what we have is pretty special. And just like managing your own home finances, we might have to, might not be able to go to Disney this year. So, you just have to be realistic about what we have, what we're approaching. Also, we have the, you know, we're fortunate to have cell signaling coming online in a couple of years that will help eliminate or at least minimize the burden on the residential taxpayer. So, it's just a matter of keeping an eye on the ball, prioritizing, and just trying to, I don't know if we have to put Band-Aids on things for a little longer, but I think that I'm hopeful that the, everything will shake out in the next couple of months as to find out what's going on with funding. So, it's just, it's almost like a wait-and-see, but we have to, again, tell the taxpayer, "We're not sure anymore. We can't, we can't give a definitive answer on a lot of things." Thank you.
Great. Kathy?
So, how do we deal with this? I think you can sum it up in two words: challenge assumptions. We're in a very fortunate position right now because our town administrator did a great job a few months ago presenting a long-term investment plan. I think it goes, what, 20 years? Taking into account everything in the facilities master plan, all of our major infrastructure investments, PFAS, all of that, and outlining what we could spend each year, okay? So, at least we have something to start with and do some horse trading and talk about. Like Brian said, this is all going to be about priorities and where we want to spend our dollars. And we need resident input. And typically, the way the budget process works is we don't really have a good conversation with the residents until right before town meeting. I think we need to think about doing the process a little bit differently. Every year that I've been on the board, I usually meet with Greg ahead of the budget planning season to discuss some changes that we could make to the process. This year, you know, we'll have a new town administrator, and I hope to be on the board to be able to continue those discussions. And the thing that's at the top of my mind is getting resident input early on how we might do some horse trading on these priorities. Specifically, if we're going to challenge assumptions when it comes to facilities, do we really need all the square footage that's being requested? I'm going to throw out something controversial. When it comes to the schools, do we really need to build a full-size Essex Elementary School? Or can we do something a little bit different? Can we do a kindergarten-through-second-grade school? There are things that we should challenge, and because some of the decisions are being made based on information that is not, it may be 10 years old, okay? When it comes to services, we need to challenge how we pay for services. Are there some services that we deliver to our customers that are really optional and are being subsidized by tax dollars? Maybe we should charge a fee for those services instead. So, I also think we need to continue to look to partner with neighboring towns to share resources. We do some, share some positions with other towns. I think we need to do more of that, perhaps in the back office area, the areas that the residents don't see. There's a lot of work being done in town hall that perhaps we could do differently and share some of those resources with other towns.
Thank you, Kathy. We're getting a lot of interesting information as the answers are coming over. Okay, Mary Ann Wood, your turn.
Thank you. Those are great answers. I agree with a lot of the things you just said, both of you just said. So, but yes, we have a long list of needed projects. Again, I'm not privy to all of them because I'm not on the board yet, but I know that we have water quality issues, seawalls, and culvert replacement. This is town infrastructure, and a lot of our obligations just keep growing. I think to move forward responsibly, we need to start prioritizing, and you'll hear this one more time, wants over needs. Every line item should face the same question: is it essential? Is it urgent? And can it wait? This kind of disciplined thinking will help us protect vital services without overspending. We have to have flexibility, forward-looking, I mean, we have to be flexible and forward-looking. Take PFAS and our waters. Six years ago, it wasn't even part of our conversation. Now, it's a top concern. We need to be ready to respond to new challenges quickly and responsibly. There are opportunities. Regionalization, certain services like public works or administration, I think would be very helpful to reduce cost. And before we invest in new infrastructure, we should look at how we, what we have and see if we can better utilize the assets that we currently own and operate. Federal and state grants are another key piece. While many are one-time awards, we can use them to find planning, to fund planning and studies that lead to smarter, long-term decisions and savings. Finally, during times of financial constraint, the select board must hold the line on unnecessary spending. The town administrator, finance committee, and the town accountant are responsible for developing the annual budget, and it's the select board's role to make sure the budget reflects the community's values and priorities. My goal is to make our town more sustainable and self-reliant so we can continue to delivering the services people count on without placing a heavy burden on taxpayers.
That's interesting. I'm hearing another theme, I mean, cost prioritizing on spending. Planning and long-term and prioritization came through. And I also heard the master plan, and the master plan to monetize the limited commercial district with, and the first horse out of that gate is cell signaling. So, that's what I heard. If I didn't hear anything else, does anyone want to clarify? Okey-dokey. Let's get down to the next topic. This is something that has really come up and surged in the last year, and that is the idea of downtown life. Many people, you know, whether they're on Facebook or writing in letters to the editor or just talking downtown amongst ourselves, there's an angst about what's happening downtown. I loved Mark Resnick, our town planner, when he said in a meeting that it's like, you know, a couple of teeth missing in an otherwise perfect smile when you see gaps in the downtown retail district. So, I hate to do this to you, Mary, Mary Ann, but you're going to start, even though you ended. And I'm going to ask you, because you are the one person here who actually has, you live downtown. You live downtown. Your downtown life is as a landlord and as a business owner. And I'd like you to sort of address this question. I'm going to actually read it, because that's the fair thing to do. Downtown Manchester faces challenges, including retail vacancies and the impact of real estate prices on commercial viability. What initiatives would you support to revitalize the downtown area? Attract and retain businesses, support existing ones, and ensure it remains a vibrant center for the community? Mary Ann?
Thank you. I just want to say I do run a business downtown named Bluebird, and I really love the community, and just meeting people in and out of that business all the time really gives me a lot of joy. And coming here originally, working at Al's Cafe, I mean, I fell in love with the downtown of Manchester. I used to joke and say I'd just be like a pinball, running back and forth to all the different locations, whether it was shopping or a different restaurant, or just literally just walking around and saying hi to people. That was a major part of my life down in Manchester. And I do find it a little disturbing that all these, there are a lot of empty places. That being said, I do have an answer that I wrote, so I should read that. But as a business owner in downtown Manchester, I know firsthand the challenges we face, including a lack of parking, rising costs, and limited communication between the town and the business community. I own and operate Bluebird Restaurant and lease a space to Jack's Barber Shop. And I've seen how even a small barrier can discourage customers and make it harder for businesses to succeed. To revitalize the downtown, we need to focus on accessibility and visibility. This includes improved signage, better wayfinding, and more welcoming downtown experience overall. These are the things the town has talked about, but now we need to make them happen. I also believe we should work with the MBTA to encourage more visitor traffic and explore creative parking solutions, including a shared or satellite parking option. The MBTA could even be a potential partner in a local advertising campaign, promoting Manchester as a destination to commuters and visitors alike. If we make it easier to access and enjoy downtown, businesses will have a better chance to thrive, and that benefits the whole community.
That's interesting. You know, Centennial Grove in Essex was created at Chabaco Lake by the MBTA as a destination. And at its peak, it brought 3,000 visitors per weekend to enjoy themselves from the city, just FYI. Kathy, why don't you go next?
So, when talking about the downtown, this is also close to my heart. I grew up in a city, but I grew up in the middle of a little downtown within that city. My dad owned a convenience store in the building that my mother's family owned with two apartments above. So, I guess mixed-use is what you would call it today. And his cousin owned the dry cleaner across the street, and his other cousin owned the liquor store. So, I come from a family of small business owners, and my fiance is still a small business owner in East Boston. So, when I see an empty storefront, it hurts, and it registers with me. There are short-term and long-term issues. And Monday night's select board meeting, I think I heard from Greg that our town planner is working with the planning board to get resident engagement on a strategy for our downtown. What do we want our downtown to be? So, listening to the residents and getting that input is really important. Regarding the short-term issues, I'm not sure if people are aware, but we have, the town leaders have a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce Downtown Improvement Committee and business owners every quarter. And a few of us from the select board go there every quarter, and we talk about the near-term issues. So, we've heard about the need for wayfinding. Parking's always a concern. Public bathrooms is the other thing that they mention all the time. So, we are doing, you're going to see some improvements in relatively short order. I think at the last select board meeting, Greg said that the public bathrooms, you'll see some signage. And on that, by Memorial Day, we've worked out a couple of agreements with local businesses who are willing to provide that service for non-customers. You will see some parking improvements, because, believe it or not, we don't do a good job of managing the parking that we do have. That was the result of two different parking studies that were conducted two or three years ago. So, you're going to see some lines painted, parking spaces painted in the street. That simple act, inexpensive act, can actually help us manage parking more effectively. Aside from the quarterly meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and those other stakeholders, the Downtown Improvement Committee Chair and I attended the Economic Development Forum in Gloucester a couple of months back, and we learned about state programs and grants that can be used to jumpstart businesses, whether they be pop-ups or whatever. There's lots of different programs. We had no idea existed that could help new businesses come into town. So, the Downtown Improvement Committee is working with the Chamber on a communications package to, that we could take to proposed businesses and say, "Hey, Manchester is a great place to do business. Here's why." And we're also talking about engaging local business owners as ambassadors to that process. So, it's, you know, just really a community effort. So, lots of good things in process, and there's a lot more work to do.
That's great. Yeah, the Chamber's done a lot. And Jim Brown from Manchester is the president, and his big campaign this year was local. So, Brian, I believe you ran on outdoor seating. That was your, that was your kicker at the last campaign. So, Brian?
Yes, and I still want to bring it back. We can all agree that retail in Manchester faces many challenges. Manchester has never been a destin, well, not in my recent memory, been a destination location. Manchester's the town you drive through to get to somewhere else. So, we have to create some kind of vibrancy, and that's, I think, where the outdoor dining would help. People driving through, seeing something, and stopping. Where they're going to park, we'll deal with that. Just an aside here, the smart sticks you saw last year, the fact that they, that it doesn't cost the town any money at all. They were put up, the vendor is footing that bill and just takes a percentage of the revenue that comes in from that. The fact is, revenues were down, which means that parking turnover was up, which is what we were trying to, the goal was to just to, rather than people parking for four, you know, two or three hours, now knowing that they're going to get hit after two hours, it rotated parking. So, it's made a difference, and the police chief has expanded that up Electric Light Hill. And so, hopefully, that'll, that'll help as far as getting more parking in town. I'm going off-script here. There's a
It's okay if you go off-script.
It's abundantly clear that the empty storefronts and restaurants. You know, reality here is downtown shopping was a thing of the past. The first strip mall, the first shopping mall is what began the death knell of downtown parking, of downtown shopping, and it's just been exacerbated by online shopping. So, a lot of times, what we have to do is we have to look at retail and restaurants that will serve the locals. The, there's a, we've had restaurants come in and fail, come in with a high price point. I think they priced their, their goods and services to the zip code and not to the people that live here. Where the tourist season is small, if we're lucky to get two months out of it. So, the other 10 months have to be sustained by you people. And I think what we have to do is find a way of servicing the people that live here in town. Again, off-script. The businesses that do thrive are geared for the local community and do not depend on tourism. With the expansion of the harbor amenities, Reed's Park, in particular, the transient docks, that's, that's going to be our gem. Bringing tourists in the summer by boat, they don't need a parking spot. And with the expansion of the docks, we'll bring more people in. It's self-sufficient, and the hope here is that when they come in the summer and they see a vibrant downtown with outdoor dining, that when they come in the summer and they see a vibrant downtown with outdoor dining, they might want to come back again. And to touch on everyone else's point, the Chamber of Commerce and the DIP are working very closely together. It's a great public-private partnership to try to draw business into town. I've met with a member of the planning board who's trying to create a little ad hoc committee that will work in conjunction with the Chamber. Discussions have been farmers' markets, where to put it, and what will bring people to town and keep them here. So, again, it's a challenge, and it's, I think, every small town, drive down the causeway in Essex. We're not unique, as much as we'd like to think so. Thank you.
First of all, I just heard maybe we should bring back Al's Cafe for locals. Are there any rebuttals? I mean, any kind of follow-ups, of course?
Okay, I do think we're unique, and I think that's a fantastic part of why Manchester is so valuable and so heartfelt to all of us. And I lived downtown for many years. I lived in a mixed-use building right on Central Street, and I don't live there anymore, but I shop locally all the time. I'm in the Stock Exchange, I'm in Madam Hadam, I'm in Richdale, I'm in Calis, I'm in 35 Beach, I'm in all of these ones, all of these restaurants. I even stop and look at the real estate places and talk to the people there. I believe our community is wonderful and we can add to it, but I also believe we need to support the existing people before we bring in new people. I think it's great to bring in new people, but you really have to show support for the people that have like put down roots here, and I do need the people to come out during the winter time. But I also need them to be able to park close by and not have to walk over a trench or anywhere else in order to get there, because we are a community of convenience, and people want to be, want convenient items. So, I definitely think that, you know, this is a wonderful, unique opportunity for everybody, and I think we bring people in and they stay. I've made so many people that are like, I came here on the Fourth of July, and I couldn't believe it, and I decided I wanted to move here. So, or I came to the beach. But this place is an amazing community, like I said, it's so supportive, and I do hear a lot from people just from being in and out of my personal business. And I could go to a meeting, but I'm also right next to a town hall. So, that's not easy, you know, you could find your businesses to communicate with them and help them along, but I don't know if that happens, you know. It's a lot of time, like, we're going to have a quarterly meeting and talk about the signs again, we're going to talk about the parking again, and I think last year at this time, I was having that conversation at one of those meetings. That's all. But I do, I love the downtown, I love the whole community.
I think there's not a single person who lives in Manchester who would love to see a barren, empty downtown. They're here because of the community feel and the love, and they love it downtown.
Eric, I did want to bring up one additional thing I forgot to mention. You know, Brian talked about how we want to bring in more people and not have to worry about parking. We did launch the self-sufficient harbor launch service this past year, and that's not just for visitors, okay? It's not just for people who might have a mooring and, you know, need to get to their boat. They expanded it to include tours. So, if you don't happen to have a boat in Manchester Harbor, guess what? You can, you know, pay a small fee, get a nice tour of the harbor, and enjoy it from a different perspective. But there's all sorts of ways to, to Mary Ann's point, take advantage of what's unique about the community and bring in more people. But we do have to pay attention to the cost aspect. I'm going to just tie that end a little bit. I actually spoke to the owner of the Mexican restaurant that used to be where Bravo is right now. He's running a great business in Gloucester, okay?
Machaca, that's Luis.
Yeah. And, and he flat-out told me, I couldn't survive here during the winter. That's what he told me. And so, we as residents, to Mary Ann's point, have a responsibility to support the businesses that are here, and as we do bring, try to fill in the empty storefronts with new businesses, we also have to try and pick businesses with the landlords that are going to be able to survive the winter. It's all about working together on a strategy and making things happen.
Amen. Okay. We're doing relatively well on time, we're going to keep going. We have one last question, and it's about affordable housing. And this is not unique to Manchester, not by a country mile. Manchester's affordable housing stocks remain far below the state's 10% threshold for this on the subsidized housing inventory. While the planning board controls zoning, it's a select board that ultimately faces the financial and the reputational consequences, from loss of state grant eligibility to legal vulnerability under Chapter 40B. What specific steps would you take? And I'm going to ask that you not, you refrain from saying SLV was wrong, the wrong idea, we need something else instead. I'd like you to focus on the something else instead then, and be specific. What specific steps would you take to ensure that Manchester makes real progress on housing affordability? And what is your response to those who resist any development aimed at addressing this mandate? We're going to start with Kathy Bellata.
So, I think it was last fall, we had a conversation with the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust because we all felt frustrated that we haven't, you know, made more progress. So, one of the questions we asked them was, can you help us by being real specific from a select board's responsibility? What can we do? What do we need to do? I know we need land, how much land? What does that look like? So, they came back to us, and they gave us very strict marching orders. We need, I think it's two acres of contiguous buildable land. That's what the select board can do. So, part of how we could get that land is by moving ahead with our facilities master plan to help free up some town-owned land that we can either use or trade with someone to get a better buildable lot. But that's, moving forward with that plan starts with taking the DPW building from where it is on Pleasant Street and moving it somewhere else so we can start looking at the domino impact of our facilities master plan. Other things we can do are, of course, continue to pursue land that might be owned by private entities, and certainly that's not something we can discuss here in a public forum, but we have to take multiple channels to try and get that land, but that's the select board's marching orders, get the land. The other thing, as I mentioned previously, is trying to continue to help Manchester be more affordable by controlling our spending and our tax rate, because that can only help going forward. Regarding your question on what do we, you know, what's my response to those who might resist any development aimed at, you know, the 10% affordable housing mandate? I don't really hear resistance to affordable housing or meeting the 10% mandate. What I hear are frustrations with what I call fake affordable housing. So, when you do a 40B project, whatever it is, that can help you get off the state's naughty list, okay, by providing a percentage of affordable housing, but the rest of the housing that's provided is really market rate. So, that causes frustrations with the residents, because they want it all to be affordable. But I actually just sat and listened to a presentation this morning at Wellspring House where I learned more about what it takes to finance affordable housing projects. My mind was blown, okay? I have to be honest with you, this is a very timely topic for me. I had no idea the complexity, that how, the complexity of the regulations adds cost to affordable housing construction. It's so much more expensive to build affordable housing than regular housing. That's a big problem. And so, I think if we could help residents understand that, and that's why the market rate housing nets that accompanies these projects is very important, I think that would go a long way towards alleviating some of the frustration. But I got to tell you, my mind was blown this morning, the complexity that's involved in some of these projects.
That might be the reason why the Affordable Housing Trust put out an RFP, I think twice, or maybe even three times, and received zero responses. Okay. Mary Ann?
Thank you. So, yes, it's my understanding that Manchester's housing is about 5%, and we need to bump it up to 10%. And I thought if the project known as Shingle Hill moves forward, that we would both legally and financially be reaching that threshold for the Chapter 40B, and maybe some protection from some of the 40B overrides. I think this helps preserve local control and can ensure we remain eligible for important and state-run funding. I know there's been some opposition to Shingle Hill, but if it's not built, right, we could face a loss of that protection, and we could lose state funding opportunities. I'm just going to go off for one second when we talk about affordable housing and mixed-rate housing, I guess. But I think it's good for a neighborhood as, you know, I think as a select board member, I would want to encourage people of different financial backgrounds to live closer together. If we make one building all affordable housing, then that kind of somewhat defeats the purpose of having different people with different backgrounds and different lifestyles all living in the same community. I think that's part of the goal. So, I would encourage people to say, okay, well, if we're only going to do 10 or 20% of a building, I think that's, that's an intelligent move to move forward like that. But if we have one building that satisfies all this, we still can't sit back. We have to maintain compliance means, for example, every time we add 10 new regular houses, including accessory dwelling units, at least one of them needs to be affordable in order to stay on track. So, this requires continuous coordination between the planning board, the select board, and the Affordable Housing Trust. I support the Affordable Housing Trust's work, and I know that they're actively looking for suitable community partners. I'd like to see even a stronger collaboration between the trust and the select board, and more clear communication with residents about what affordable housing really means, because it's often misunderstood. These homes support seniors, young families, town workers, and the very people who help Manchester thrive. For those who resist, I'd say, well, we all want to preserve what's special about Manchester, but we also need to make room for those who contribute to its future. If we are approaching this locally and thoughtfully, we can grow in a way that reflects our values instead of having it dictated to us by outside developers.
Well said. I would also just say that the Affordable Housing Trust is working with a partner in a consulting fashion, so I don't want to, the Affordable Housing Trust has done yeoman's work. So, Brian, ZBA, you live downtown. Let's hear what you have to say.
Excuse me, to the point of living downtown, I love living downtown. I don't know why people would want to live on Hickory Hill. I'd rather live downtown. I like the fact that I can walk anywhere I want to go.
You just lost the Hickory Hill vote.
Is anyone there? The good news is, we're not alone. Eastern Massachusetts is a big need for affordable housing. I think, I think the last I heard was, every year, there's, we're both running 40,000 units light on affordable housing here in Massachusetts. And the bad news is, we don't have any land, we're really out of land, okay? Much of the developable land has been placed into Conservation Trust, and that creates, although it's nice for the environment, we live in this environment and there's no place to live. The first, the first thing I would do is I'd stop paying lip service to affordable housing. We talk about it, every time something comes up, we stop pushing back against it. This has been a pet peeve of mine, is that every year, we give the Affordable Housing Trust $200,000 to build their coffers, which is great. Don't look at me that way. This is great. But then last year, we gave $200,000 to Essex Green Belt to take 30 acres of developable land and put it into Conservation Trust. The hypocrisy there was kind of, it was just, it was blatant as far as I was concerned. There was 30 acres of land, if we need affordable housing, why didn't we put it there? No, we gave a nonprofit the money so they could put it into Conservation Trust, and that, that just bothered me. Currently, we're looking for developers to expand, and I think was touched upon, to expand Newport Park. But again, the cost, and as you just learned, the developable housing, there has to be quantity there to make the housing affordable for, or to make a viable investment by the, these developers. But I will say this, I think the first step is the new, the state's ADU. This might be unpopular. I think we embrace the ADUs, and I think we even take a look at it and maybe explore making these ADUs available for purchase later on with a deed restriction caveat to it. These are things that I think, I'm not advocating, I'm thinking it was something we ought to explore. It helps create affordable housing, and as Mary Ann pointed out, every time we add an ADU, it might impact, negatively impact the SHI. So, we have to keep an eye on that. So, if I could come up with the answer, I could go all over the country selling this idea. So, it's something that, it's unique, it's not unique to Manchester. We have to work with our state partners and find a developer who wants to work with the town on the beginning. Rather than be adversarial with the developer, we have to find the developer and start from the very beginning. Meet with them at the very beginning, walk through the process, they can hear what our needs are, they can hear what, we can hear what their needs are, and compromise and get something that's palatable to everybody. If everyone hurts just a little bit, I think everything works well. So, again, it's about increasing our housing stock, but doing it the right way. I don't know if I answered any questions there.
You did, you said that everyone should hurt just a little bit. That was very well said. Okay, so, that concludes our questions, and I want to say to the candidates, thank you, thank you. You're all really prepared, you gave us some really amazing answers, you covered a lot of ground, and I really appreciate it, and we all appreciate it, and the voters do too. So, thank you. Okay, so now, we are going to open it up to any questions with the audience. The way we're going to do it, because of this setup here, is the first person to ask a question, I'll repeat it for 1623, and while whoever you're asking the question to is answering the question, I'm going to take this microphone and come down and hand it to whoever is next, so that's how I'm going to do it. So, who has a question and would like to start, if anybody? Jim Starkey. I know you can project, so.
In 2011, after a very public mooring scandal, town meeting passed a bylaw, harbor bylaw, that mandated transparency and required that the harbor department maintain a log of all mooring assignments, on the assumption that the only antidote to corruption is transparency. That has not been done. There is no public log, there is no transparency. So, where we are today is that we know that there are more than two dozen moorings that are very clearly assigned outside of our mooring regulations, very, very clearly. There are another 50, 60, maybe 70 moorings for which there is no documentation whatsoever. They cannot be tied to the waiting list, they can't be tied to the change list, they can't be tied to anything. So, I'm going to ask particularly Kathy and Brian, what are you going to do to bring the town in compliance with the harbor bylaw and provide transparency in our harbor department?
The question, and this is for 1623, is about transparency with moorings and compliance with the 2011 harbor bylaw. Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. And it was directed at Kathy and Brian, although, Mary Ann, if you have something to say, you're welcome to say it.
First of all, I want to acknowledge the fact that I agree with you, Mr. Starkey, about the fact that we're not exactly following the bylaw, and this has been brought to our attention multiple times at select board meetings, but it wasn't until I saw your written description of the problem on a Facebook post that it kind of clicked. And the word that I think is in the bylaw that we're not adhering to is, there's some sort of like transactions or transaction log, I forget the exact phrasing. But we have very transparent lists of who has what moorings, but what he is correct that is missing is what I'll call, you know, general ledger type log. This mooring was added. This other mooring was reassigned to so-and-so. This mooring was removed from service. That kind of general ledger type transaction log does not exist in a public posting, it may be in some database somewhere, but it's not publicly available. So, it does make it difficult to ensure that our bylaws are being followed correctly with mooring assignments. So, at the select board meeting, we did discuss having an audit. I believe the audit was deemed to be I believe the audit was deemed to be very expensive to conduct. I believe an internal audit is now the plan, but I do want to acknowledge Mr. Starkey's comment because if we're going to follow the bylaws, we also have to produce that type of a log and keep it updated and post it publicly.
To the point where Kathy alluded as far as an independent audit, it came in at about $100,000. And we all decided that was way too much money for an independent audit. We could do it internally. And I think at this point, two members, I think Jeff Delaney and myself, will be working with the HAC to develop a plan on that as well. I don't believe anything nefarious was done during these transactions. I liken this to passing down season tickets. All right, where, all right, I'll keep my name on it and you start using them. Is it right? No. But is it common? Yes. So as Kathy pointed out, we're looking at tightening that up, and we're going to... It's on the agenda for next fall. We're going to start really cleaning things up. There were some questions about some transient... Well, some of the moorings, the commercial moorings that were used by the two marinas or boatyards, let's call them boatyards. We decided that at this point in time, it was, if there was a clerical error, if there was issues by the... This town, we weren't going to... The people that were already committed to those moorings was unfair for them to be thrown off a mooring a month before the season goes. So that was a decision that I reached. I think the board agreed with us. And we're going to revisit this in earnest in the fall.
That's great. Thank you. I'd like to get to another topic, but because we've spent... We have a limited time, but...
We'll get a microphone this time. The question of an audit is complete nonsense. It is a job requirement that he maintain that list.
Any other questions?
Hey there, Rick Rogers. So thank you all for running and/or serving. So with a new town administrator coming on board and a relatively recent hire, the town planner, one of the things I've noticed over time as an outside observer is that this town has a little bit of challenge when it comes to thinking holistically, right? Just as an example, for space, we're now getting a senior center, but we lost a community center. And those two things happened relatively close to each other. Are there ways or what steps would you take to make sure this town is thinking more collectively and connecting all the different projects and departments?
I think...
Yeah, the loss of the community center was unfortunate. The senior center, the work, the latest incarnation of the community center started... Or the senior center, some of you people remember, this has been discussed for going on 15 years now, 10 years. We started the process two years ago on the senior center. So the community center, one didn't impact the other. It's unfortunate what happened with the community center. And the work that was done, it's unfortunate, but I think that the mission of the community center, and as you say, has been picked up holistically. Pox and Rec has done a marvelous job picking up where I don't think anyone's even noticed, unfortunately, that there is, other than there's no building, no one has even noticed that everything that the community center did has still been going on as far as the Easter egg hunts, the jingle all the way, all these things. And that's a tribute to the town. And I'm quite proud of everything the town has accomplished. Public safety, the same thing. The cooperation, you wanted to talk about cooperation between public safety, between police, fire, chief, DPW. It's seamless, and they all support each other. And I believe that our town government right now, with the envy of any small town on Cape Can or anywhere in eastern Massachusetts. So yes, we've addressed those things. Nothing goes unaddressed. And again, I'm quite proud of what we've accomplished here.
Yeah, I mean, this has to do... Mary Ann, you said something about partnerships earlier, as did Kathy. Do you have something you'd like to add? Mary Ann?
I think I would like to add something because I don't know if I... The question... I think the question might have been a little bit different than what the answer was. So talking about looking at the town holistically. So yes, we close a community center, and then we open it someplace else. I think I know what you're talking about. So for instance, if we talk about moving the DPW, do we just move the DPW without thinking three steps ahead of what's going to go there, and we're going to move this to a different location? I do think that should be almost like a map that we should be looking at all the time and thinking about what our next steps are. We don't want to build a new DPW facility and then realize that we need to move the fire department over there or the police department. So I think it is good to think about all of our town utilities or facilities that we're using, and don't think of them all by themselves. We have to think about this all together, and we should probably be thinking about a 20-year plan at all times.
So to piggyback on that, you're exactly right, and that's exactly what we did Monday night. So at Monday night's select board meeting, Chuck Dam gave us an update on the DPW facility, and that's exactly what we talked about. We outlined, I think, three different options. Is it DPW by itself? Is it DPW plus police? Or is it DPW plus police and fire? On Monday night, the select board voted to establish a task force, again, to get community engagement on these topics so people do know what's going on and we can communicate more effectively with the residents. So we're going to put together a task force to help the DPW outline what the next steps are in terms of deliverables. So you're exactly right. That's what we should be doing, and that's exactly what we're doing.
Great. Any other questions?
Excuse me, can I just... I just want to jump on real quickly. The community center was not the failure of the town, okay? The town did not cause the failure of the community center.
Yes, the community center was a private nonprofit.
As a matter of fact, the town worked real hard to try to save the community center. Okay?
Dave Lumston, former chairman of the Housing Authority many, many years ago. At a town meeting recently, it was stated that we make that contribution of $200,000 a year, every year, towards the building of new affordable housing, and yet we haven't been able to find a developer to take the money that's been saved so far. I'm concerned about the 84 units that we have right now for elderly housing in two different locations. They're deplorable. They really need to be updated. And I'm wondering if perhaps we can't find a developer to use the money that we have in place, could we use some of that money to restore the 84 units that we have in place right now?
Good question. Does anybody want to take that?
So again, it's about economics. In the discussions that the Affordable Housing Trust has had with developers, the Newport Park conversation is included in that discussion. It's all about economics and what can we do. It's not just about having a certain dollar amount. There is so much... And again, I learned, so I can't even tell you what I learned this morning because I'm not sure I even understand all of it, but the bureaucracy around taking care of affordable housing is extensive. And so I just want to assure you, though, that when the Affordable Housing Trust is working on this issue, the Newport Park is part of the conversation.
Just to add on to that as well, and as Kathy points out, the economics of trying to just... We have to find a piece of... A parcel of land that a developer can then also... We can use that as mitigation. I mean, developing is the only trade I know of that you can extort, and by calling it mitigation, okay? And so the reality here is that, okay, if you do... If we allow you to do 100 units over here, we also want you... You know, sometimes developers will come in and we'll give you a basketball court or something like that. We can say, also, we need you to look at... And again, with the money that we have in hand, we need you to look at this as well. So it's, again, it's economics of scale, and that's what we have to look at. In and of itself, try to fix one of those, doesn't work.
Hello, Lindsay Banks. You've made it clear Manchester has many costs, projects, and budgetary constraints, yet Manchester also has a proud history of supporting excellence in education. And as Erica mentioned, we're at a bit of a tense time given the upcoming ballot vote at the town election in Essex for the override. So how will you, as members of the select board, work in support of education and navigate the relationship with Essex, our regional partner? Thank you.
I'll start. So every time I hear about a cut to a program, and I mean music, arts, library services, sports, anything like that, I consider all of those components of a well-rounded education. And I don't like the direction we've been heading. It's death by 1,000 cuts, okay? We need to partner more effectively with the school district on common expenses that are non-classroom related. This year, both the towns and the school district had real serious challenges with health care expenses. Is there anything that we can do there to partner with each other to... On different plans or programs to lower costs? We have to pay strict attention to our fixed costs. Again, I think we just need to be open and honest and take an honest assessment of the fixed costs, which include facilities, and just be willing to have a conversation about controversial subjects. Because the dollar... You know, if you're talking about a new $30 million building, we've just got to be willing to have an open and honest conversation. And whatever answer we arrive at, at least we'll be... Have been willing to hear people out. But I do think focusing on the fixed costs, the non-classroom costs, trying to partner as much as possible between the two towns and possibly adding, you know... Are we open to adding another town to the mix? You know, whatever it takes, let's get the good ideas out there and just be willing to talk them through.
Does anybody else want to take that? Okay. Sorry, Brian?
Just real quick, I think that one of our greatest treasures is one of our biggest problems, all right? With the grade school system, it's driving our real estate taxes. Our real estate prices up. So that... There's a... There's the conundrum there. But I do think that we have to be, as good partners with the town of Essex, we have to be aware of their financial constraints and work. I think that I'm hoping that if the Essex town meeting is any indication of the election, we've dodged another bullet. But we have to look at the long-term solutions, and that requires town leaders of both communities and the district sit down and study this and come up with a plan that works. Because I got to tell you, there's other opportunities with shared services with a town like Essex that I'd like to explore later on in my tenure. But we have to get through the district first and make that work, and then we can look at other shared services with the towns. And then we have some economic... Again, economies of scale, and there's some synergy between the two towns. I was here when the district first was even discussed, and I watched how it evolved through... It started with sports, how it evolved, and my kid playing in Essex for a while. And I think there's other opportunities, be it public safety, be it DPW, that we can share with the town of Essex. But we have to get the district under control, and that requires town leaders to sit down and have honest discussions as to what is the best route. And if it means revisiting the agreement, then we have to revisit the agreement.
That's great. I would just like to mention that for anybody who watches this later, we are actually taping this, you know, this Monday, Essex passed easily, overwhelmingly, a proposition, two and a half override, to support the budget at town meeting. But we do not... We have not yet hit the election, which is next week on Tuesday, where it, you know, it requires a ratification at the ballot. And I will say, Brian, to your point, there were 457 people who showed up at town meeting on Monday night for a very, very long town meeting, and that was great in Essex. But there are 2,900 registered voters in Essex. So it is at the ballot, it could still be something different. In any case, that... We've hit time now, so I can't take any other questions. But I would like to say thank you, and also, especially Mary Ann, you have... If you want to make a closing... Would you like to make a closing comment? Anybody? As we... I shouldn't have said it that way because I kind of put you on the spot, but if anyone wants to say any closing remarks, I would welcome it there. How's that?
I want to say thank you for your time. And I have students still in the school system, so I am... And I was a school teacher, and I am aware of, you know, budgets and having teachers and wanting that community to be very happy. But I understand that health care and budgets, you know, are a big constraint on the school system. That being said, I just want to say I bring the perspective of being a parent and a property owner and a business owner and an educator and an attorney and a longtime resident. So I really am invested in this community. I feel like the community is invested in me, and I hope you give me an opportunity to give back some more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Kathy or Brian, did you want to...
Yeah, just in closing, again, the reason I ran for election three years ago was because I was retired and I had a skill set that I thought was pretty important and could really help the town. What I like about our board of five select board members is we are each very individual... We're very different people. We are very different people. We ask different questions because our backgrounds are very different, and we debate issues pretty hard sometimes, right, Brian? But at the end of the day, we come together and do what we feel is best for the town of Manchester, even though we may not have all voted the same way. We respect each other's opinions and work hard for the town. And so three years ago, I made the commitment that if I was elected, I would do my homework, I would listen to the residents, and do my best to make a decision that was in the best interests of the town. And I make that same commitment to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three years ago, I didn't know what I was getting myself into. And here I am. Now I know what I'm getting myself into, and I want to stay. The... It's been... There's a lot of challenges, and there's a lot of frustration. And I walked out of a couple of meetings saying I'm done. But then I regroup, and I realized that there's more work to be done, and I have more work to accomplish. And I just think that the perspective I bring is... I'm trying to bring the government back to the people, just a regular guy, trying to look at it the way everyone out here looks at things. And with... As Kathy pointed out, the balance that we have on the board allows that kind of critical thinking, and every once in a while, we'll change each other's mind. I don't know. But I thank you for your time. I look forward to doing this another three years. And let's get this town moving. Thank you.
I love that. Let's get this town moving. Thank you to Mary Ann Wood, Kathy Belada, and Brian Solissey. Thank you, guys. Thank you for running. Thank you for this.